Okay, I'm gonna call to order the January 12th, 2016 Planning Commission roll call.
Chair Simpson.
Here.
Vice Chair Griffin.
Here.
Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Reddick.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Meyer is absent.
Thank you. Consent agenda, we have on the consent agenda, the December 8th Planning Commission minutes. Is there a motion for approval?
Go move.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in seconds. Anybody have any corrections or additions? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council liaison? The whole table's empty. I could move right on to staff announcements.
That would be perfect.
Thank you.
So, as many of you know, January 5th, there was a city council meeting. And so the Mandel property that was proposed for rezoning, the three acre neighborhood, commercial to medium density residential lot, the second reading was approved, so the council approved that in their second reading. They've also, Commissioner Simpson had asked me to speak to this, so they discussed placing an outright ban on marijuana related uses on the November ballot. And also, in that same vein, placing a 3% tax, because you can place a 3% local tax, but it has to be voted on by the voters at a general election. So, they put the 3% on there, in case the ban fails, then they will still have the tax. If they both pass, like the ban passes, you can't collect any taxes, you don't collect any revenue. So, in that, they also split out medical and recreational, there's a strong belief on part of some counselors that recreational should be treated differently than medical. So they had a, excuse me, they'll have a first reading at their next meeting, which is January 19th, for a ban on medical, so they'll discuss whether or not they want to place that onto the ballot or not. And then they had a, they plan on making the next one, the second reading, for a ban on recreational. So, the pros and cons to that, Measure 91 passed, the police chief has indicated that he recognizes that whether we allow it here or not, retail sales, or growing, or processing, or manufacturing, it still will occur outside of here, and he would like to have the revenue to, or the resources available to him to help enforce the law against people that are breaking that law. And so, if any portion of any type of the marijuana sales, manufacturing, if we ban any of that, then you can't, you don't collect any type of revenue. We will have the medical marijuana dispensary that was approved, it's already been approved, so we have one on 12th and Sherwood Road, she hasn't opened up yet, that would be grandfathered in, it would not affect her.
Okay.
She would not have the 3% regardless.
Right. And, you know, it's all kind of muddy water, because as of January 1st, the OLCC is starting to send out their growers with these, we call them land use compatibility statements, that say, are these allowed uses? We don't have any regulations in place now, so realistically, you could say that growing recreational marijuana is allowed in our industrial zone, for example, because we don't have any regulations against it. If they impose a ban come January 19th, and we've already signed one Lux for the growing in, for recreational growing in the industrial zone, if they pass the ban on January 19th, and that person has not got their license from the state yet, then they wouldn't be allowed to grow there recreationally. They're allowed to grow there medically, because they're already doing that. And that's it. And so, tonight, we'll have, we'll talk about the Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan, and with your blessing, we would go to the February 2nd City Council hearing on this same matter. So, with that, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And I want to apologize for those people that came, that we were a bit late in starting. We had a fantastic industrial zone use work session upstairs just prior to this meeting, and it ended just about the time we were running downstairs. And so, we're gonna add one agenda item after the public hearing, which is an opportunity for the commission to provide feedback to staff from that industrial use work session.
Yeah.
So. Right now, we have community comments, and I should have announced at the beginning that in the back, there are blue cards. If you wish to testify tonight, we ask you that you fill out one of the blue forms, turn it into the commission secretary, and just note which topic you want to discuss tonight. There's also a green signup sheet in the back, and that will put you on an email notification for things that are happening in the Planning Commission in general. But the blue sheets is so you can testify tonight. And under community comments, these are limited to items that are not already on the agenda tonight. And so, I have one form, Kurt Christensen. Items not already on the agenda for this evening, and we're discussing the Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan, so if you're... That is...
Now.
That's now. Community comments is anything that's not already on the agenda.
Yep, that's what...
That would be for tonight. Yep.
Right now.
And you're up first.
My name is Kurt Christensen, 22520 Southwest Fair Oaks Court, Sherwood, Oregon. I live on the east side of Sherwood. And last weekend, I happened to be over on the other side of 99, and I happened to be near Edie and Terrapin. And I got to look at three humongous, very ugly developments that are going up in the middle of a single-family housing area. And I had occasion to listen to a lot of the residents that were wondering how in the world building permits were issued for those buildings. They look ugly, they look inappropriate. The lot is a very long, narrow lot. The buildings that are going up are similar in design to the Cannery Row design, with a limited number of garages, garage spaces underneath, and then two floors up on top. There's not going to be parking space sufficient for the total number of people that are going to be living in those places. But what seemed to offend the residents more than anything was the placement, the zoning for those three huge buildings seemed inappropriate and seemed odd, because the entire neighborhood is single-family housing. So I would encourage the Planning Commission to take a look at what actually happened over there, because people are very upset about it. And I would encourage the Planning Commission in the future to look at not allowing these kind of inappropriate infills. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
You're welcome.
As you know, we cannot discuss a matter that has not been noticed, according to Oregon Public Meeting laws, but we can get more information from staff if you need more. And I'm not familiar with the project, it did not come before the commission, so it is not something that we were aware of. So, if staff can just give us...
Sure. So, the property is zoned high-density residential, and there's actually a lot of land along Edie in that area that is zoned for multifamily. So, although they're not developed today with multifamily, there are single-family homes on large lots that could ultimately develop out as multifamily. And this one is actually, they're not, they're full, 14 townhomes that will be in that location. They are multifamily, because they're on the single lot, but there will be townhomes, and so that doesn't mean that there's one, two units like this, the units are 14.
Oh, 14 side-by-side townhomes?
Yeah.
So like Woodhaven?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. A little bit different, because Woodhaven's six plexes within there. Yeah.
So this is one building of 14?
No, there's three different buildings. Yeah.
Okay, and it's...
It is, it's an odd-shaped lot, and it is adjacent to an existing single-family neighborhood.
But you're saying that there's other lots that are not developed nearby that are also zoned that way? And so this was a staff-level decision, because it was a permitted use?
It was actually, I don't believe it was a staff-level decision, it was approved in 2009, and so it was in that area where the council had approved a extension for anything that had happened during the economic crash. So this came in at the tail end of 2013, and so...
It may have, I honestly don't remember frankly if it went to the hearings officer, I don't believe it was this, I don't know.
It's just frankly permitted outright, so there wasn't any...
Well, it's permitted, it went through, it had to go through a site plan review process, but I don't remember whether or not it was a staff-level hearings officer. I don't think it went to Planning Commission.
Even in 2009, though.
Yeah, so the information is that it's high-density residential, so neighboring properties very likely could redevelop in the same...
Could see the same type of development, absolutely.
Okay, so that's useful information, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright. I don't have any other community comment forms. Alright, then we will move on to new business, which is our public hearing. And the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on PA 16-01 Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to testify and provide information to the Planning Commission concerning the Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan. The commission will conduct tonight's hearing in the following order. Staff will present the report, followed by questions, if any, by the Planning Commission. We will then open the public, open the hearing for public testimony, and each person's time will be limited as followed. The applicant will have 30 minutes, split between presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application will have four minutes each, persons opposed to the application will have four minutes each. There'll be rebuttal from the applicant, which will be the remainder of the 30 minutes allowed. We will then close the public hearing, and there'll be final comments by staff. Then the commission will be allowed to ask questions of staff, if they have any, and then discussion and deliberation by the commission. Again, if you wish to speak tonight, please fill out one of the blue testimony forms and submit it to the recording secretary. The Planning Commission chair will recognize people who wish to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the chair. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, as this hearing will be recorded. And you need to press and hold the button for two to three seconds until the light turns green. The Planning Commission is making a recommendation to the city council, and the city council is the final decision-maker on this matter. And it is legislative, so we do not have any ex parte contact...
Correct.
...concerns.
So, a couple of things, this will not be a formally adopted plan. Hopefully, you've all had ample time to read that short document, but I'll quickly go through, the city is the applicant in this process, we...
May I ask a question? Are you applicant or staff? And not that it, I mean, I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak and have time to hear what's going on, so...
So...
But I just don't want to start the 30-minute clock as your applicant, or your 15 minutes of staff.
Right, so I guess my first 15 minutes will be, or my first five minutes will be staff. Then you can turn it over to the applicant. I guess, there are several people representing the applicant, including citizens of the Community Advisory Committee that are present tonight. So myself, Connie and Bob are here representing the city, we worked on this project, there's a whole host of people I'd like to just include here. So Kirsten Green and Anaise Mathis from Cogan Owens Green were our prime consultants. Martin Gloucester von Loon from Sarah Architects was our urban designer. Lorelei Juntenen and Beth Goodman from Eco Northwest were our economists, they worked on the housing needs analysis, our phasing program, and the funding options. Kevin Timmons and Jason Lynn from OTAC were consultants working on GIS support, which is Geographic Information Systems, so they helped with some of the mapping and infrastructure. And John Van Stauberen from Pacific Habitat Services did a quick review of any issues that we might run up against with natural resources. And Chris Majewski with the DKS and Associates was our traffic consultant. Also, as part of this team, and they're not all represented here tonight, but are the CAC members, and if you could, please stand up, I don't know if anybody's added. So I have Tony Bevel, Rick Parnell, Ida Wilkins, Diane, Diane, I don't have your last name, Matthews, and Patrick Franco are here tonight, as well as Commissioner Simpson, who represented the Planning Commission in this endeavor. So, what is Sherwood West? Well, this is Sherwood West, it's the Blue Urban Reserve area that is located generally everything west of Elwert, south of Shoal Sherwood, west of Roy Rogers, and north of Highway 99, and north of Chapman Road. And then it goes out to Eastview Parkway, which is the furthest eastern boundary that we have a road to designate it as. It is basically, the planned document before you is intended to be a tool for the community to rely on in future discussions related to growth and expansion of the Sherwood urban growth boundary. Because it's not being adopted, we purposely set it up that way, so that it could be a tool, and it wouldn't be a binding document, so some of the concept plan in here you'll see is fluid, in that we have options on some of these things, like for example, the transportation alternatives for the extension of Elwert past Edie. We have two different options in there, that wasn't intended to be a decision, hard and fast decision on this today, because we won't be making that decision until that land's brought in, and until there's a refinement plan that's put together for that area. So, real quickly, urban reserves are lands that Metro has put in place, and they're designated in the, I guess that color, I would call it tan, others might call it taupe, are areas that Metro will look at around the existing UGB area for future expansion over the next 50 years. So when there's a need to expand the urban growth boundary, they'll look at all these. So this is just one of a whole host of it, but we're actually the first ones to look at an urban reserve area outside of the urban growth boundary. The green area then, the light green area are considered rural reserves, and those are areas that Metro has said, we're not going to touch those for 50 years. So those areas are off, you know, we're not going to look at those for expansion. Sherwood West is about 1,291 acres, which is quite a big addition to the city of Sherwood. But it's still, and Martin will talk about this as he goes into the plan, Sherwood's still relatively small, even with this area brought in. It's a metro-funded project, the planned document itself has an executive summary, it outlines the process that we went through, talks about a little bit of the history and growth of Sherwood, and how we got to the baseline that we wanted to start, begin working with. It goes into the actual concept plan about, it talks about existing conditions out in Sherwood West, it talks about some of the challenges we're going to have in growing out that way, it talks about some of the improvements that are going to be necessary to support urban levels of growth out there. We put together a phasing and funding strategy plan, that phasing plan is not a hard and fast saying that you have to bring this area in before this area. What we've done is the phasing plan is set up so that you know what improvements are going to be required of each phase before they can be brought in. So those are conversations that the community can have. Then there will be next steps and recommendations, and then the appendices is all the background information that was collected throughout this effort. The plan attributes overall of the concept plan, these are things that we thought and derived through the public process as the most pressing issues that needed to be considered in our concept plan. And we talk about 10-minute neighborhoods, these are neighborhoods that are small and compact, resource protection, so we'll get in, Martin will get into that, into the plan, access to nature and trails, schools, there's, there is two school potential locations identified in the plan. Again, this is not hard and fast, it wouldn't necessarily go in those two locations, that just kind of shows us how that area could develop out. It kind of gives us a frame of reference to begin conversations with, and in those two areas, we're chosen generally within those areas, because that is geographically spreading out the district, so that it makes sense for neighborhoods that would be developing in and around there. And then neighborhood scale serving retail, I know that we just rezoned the Mandel property, that was three acres, these are much smaller pieces of property, they would be geared toward retail that serves the more immediate needs of the neighborhood. So again, why do this now? Well, Metro funded it, we requested it, because we're running out of land for residential development. We knew we were running out of land for residential development, but we had not yet gone through our housing, our housing needs analysis. The city, through a separate process, but in this process, funded a housing needs analysis, which allowed our consultants at Econ Northwest to gather the data on housing that we have now for a future comprehensive plan update. So that is in draft format, so the raw data is there, the policy decisions associated with that data have yet to be made. But what we do know from that raw data is that Sherwood has experienced annual growth rates of between 3 and 8% since 1990. Metro currently says that we're going to grow at 0.7%, and that may be, we may grow only at 0.7%. I would also say that the area that was considered for our existing inventory includes all lands within the existing urban growth boundary. That includes Brookman then, Brookman's within the urban growth boundary. Well, we know that we've had a hard time getting that area annexed in, so the question is, is where do we grow from here? Sherwood's consistently ranked as one of the top small towns in America, it's ranked as a very safe place to live, has good schools, people like living out here, and there's no reason to believe that there won't be a continued demand for people to locate here, so a strong and continued demand for additional land. And we've already talked about that and began seeing this, where people are saying, well, I don't have residential land available, people aren't willing to sell me the land for development, and I can't get out into Brookman and develop it residentially, because it's not in the city, and the city's not going to expand urban services out this way. So you'll start seeing more infill projects, you'll start seeing people going back and looking to rezone their properties, and you'll just see, start to see neighborhoods transform anyhow, because people are already allowed to do some of the things that people didn't think they could do on their property, and are now saying, oh hey, I want to put an accessory dwelling unit on my lot. Well, you can put an accessory dwelling unit on your lot in any residential neighborhood, but a lot of people didn't know you could do that. So, I think you'll start seeing, seeing that type of change in the neighborhoods. So, with that, I'm going to turn the mic over to Kirsten Green and Martin Gloucester von Loon, our consultants, to talk a little bit more about the plan.
Thank you, good evening. Chair and Commissioners, Kirsten Green, Managing Principal with Cogan Owens Green, and feel very fortunate to have been selected by your city to help assist with this planning process. We, I'm going to advance by slide here, we take very seriously our social compact in Oregon regarding community engagement and land use planning, it's not just required by our statewide land use planning system, but it is indeed just a relationship between citizens and its government about how the town, how the communities will grow. So the public involvement activities were, I think, unique here and very deep, really appreciate community advisory committee members attending tonight, and I hope they'll speak to you about how they felt in their, with their involvement. This is, as Brad said, very unique with respect to being a preliminary concept plan before an area is added to the urban growth boundary. Your staff took this challenge very seriously, and met with, invited and met with most of the property owners in the study area, so absolutely commendable. When we developed the public involvement strategy with the Citizen Advisory Committee, this benefits of, you know, Y concept plan, so tried to be consistent about this messaging started at the outset, continued, you may have seen the video online, I think that's still there. We certainly achieved the frequency and effectiveness of the community engagement opportunities, several hundred community members involved throughout the process. We saw increasing participation over time, consistent with the goal of the public involvement plan. Staff and our consulting team piloted new techniques, including online engagement, learned from doing that, and then identifying community current, concerns throughout the process and addressing them. So we consider this really a co-creation with the Community Advisory Committee members and the Technical Advisory Committee members, and we could not have done it without them. There's just a broad list of the community engagement activities that staff should be commended again for going out all about over the summer, wherever people were gathered, we were online, and then of course, working in concert with the Community Advisory Committee and Technical Advisory Committee members, to really morph and shape this plan in several iterations over the 18-months process. The vision statement you have before you, and I suspect that you've seen it in the plan, but really, Martin will speak to this, but we were so struck with the quality of Sherwood as a community, we knew that we could only create, help create a plan here that would complement and build off the city's existing form and character. So I think you'll see that throughout the plan, we know that development would need to contribute to the overall fiscal health of the community as well. So the goals for the public invol, excuse me, the goals for the overall plan, the Community Advisory Committee members and technical advisors helped us create these goals on the left-hand column for the plan, and we met and exceeded all of the evaluation criteria. So the growth, the bold, Connie has put the bold in for evaluation criteria, that the Community Advisory Committee member agreed that we had exceeded, and the others, we simply met, and probably good planning in Oregon just being accomplished is a victory in and of itself. We hope you agree. But the design includes the complete community attributes that Brad touched on a bit earlier, very closely held values to Sherwood residents, as you know, access to nature, recreational opportunities, transportation choice, development that recognizes your heritage, provides access to nature, I mentioned, and that implementation is pragmatic. After Martin reviews the draft plan before you and its attributes, I believe Connie will talk a little bit about implementation and those strategies that we'd advance to City Council for their consideration, once the area would be brought into the urban growth boundary. So, congratulations on being the first community in the region to take this on, this urban reserve planning. It was an experiment, and we think it ended up very well, so look forward to any questions and comments you have, and with that, I'd just turn it over to Martin, and slide the clicker over towards him there, sir.
Thank you, Kirsten. My name is Martin Gloucester von Loon, I'm an urban designer with Sarah Architects in Portland. Before I get to the plan, I want to highlight a couple of the analysis lessons we learned through the process, through the input from citizens and technical committees, because it became the building block for the plan, and I have a sense that it really resonated with a lot of folks in town. So, it's a two-part analysis, first, I'd like to talk about the history of Sherwood as it grew over time, and second, I'm going to look at the landform on which the city grew. In the last 130 years or so, the city of Sherwood has evolved dynamically from this scene here, with horses and carriages, there was a lot of change, we saw the train come and the automobile, and it has had its, its impact on the shape and form of the city. Back in 1895, when it was platted, there were nine blocks where we currently have the historic downtown Sherwood, along the railroad, and that's the late 1800s, and if we fast-forward 130 years, through the increments outlined here, we're at about 1900, or 19,000, excuse me, population, and a much broader, wider-ranging city spread out over the landscape. So 19,000 people call Sherwood home, and the most are very content with the quality of life that exists here today. Small-town feel is one of those terms we heard all the time throughout the process, and for me, as a designer, it was interesting to find out if there were physical reasons that explained that quality that people really, really care about, because even the total footprint of this town, as you see it on this slide, looks rather large. Sherwood does break down in smaller components at a neighborhood scale, and that became one of our leading principles. We measured that existing Sherwood today contains about 10 to 11 distinct walkable areas, and we define walkable by areas that have a radius of about a quarter mile, or five-to-10-minute walk from the center of that circle to the edge, and that seems to coincide with a lot of your existing neighborhoods. And when we, when we add them all up together, they fit in a circus, circle, although it looks like an oval on that screen, a circle with a radius of about a mile, so there's their scale and their size. If you look at the potential capacity of the west Sherwood planning area, in theory, it has room for another five to six of those walkable districts or neighborhoods, and if you were to consider a future build-out taking place there, the entirety of Sherwood would fit still within a circle that's 105-mile radius, so you go from a mile to, I'm sorry, woo-hoo, that's a big one, 1.5. So we go from one mile to 1.5. So we go from one mile to one point five mile radius, thank you. Wow, that, that got me off my phone. So that's scale, so it's still relatively small, I think, although we can argue about that, but that gives us at least a sense about both the neighborhood scale and the town as a whole. And then, um, this other component became really important to the planning, it's the landform and the, the pattern that, that the city grew out in. And we, we coined that nestled in the landscape. So when you look at this early, uh, USGS map, uh, early Sherwood, because it's probably about the fifties, you can see if you look carefully, uh, downtown Sherwood there, the diagonal, um, thin diagonal is the railroad, and you notice in, with these contour lines, that the landscape on which the city nestled, uh, or, um, was settled is right on the edge of a floodplain, the flat plains of Tuolton, the floodplain, and the hills that go up towards the left and the bottom of this page. So a very, varied landscape, um, with a lot of quality. And, um, those areas have names, uh, Shehala Mountains to the west, Parrot Mountain to the south, Tonkin Scablands to the east, and the Tuolton River to the north. And they don't just have names, they have a real impact on how you experience Sherwood today. The Shehala Mountains seem to always be in the backdrop, uh, when you get to the higher elevations. This is where you see them from the tennis courts and, um, and the Sunset Park, top of the hill. On the other side of those hills is Newburgh. Tonkin Scablands is a flatter area that's scoured out in one of the late Ice Ages that were here way before we got here. And that is a sort of a threshold in the landscape across which you, uh, go to Tuolton or you come in from Tuolton. This is on ninety-nine. Parrot Mountain is towards the south, um, as seen here from ninety-nine, that also shows a backdrop and sort of hems the town in, uh, on the southern end. And then the landscape is wide open on the north end of town with the Tuolton River floodplain. If you look carefully, you can actually see Mount Hood here on the horizon on the left. That's a quality that, uh, other parts of Sherwood don't necessarily have until you get up higher on the hills. So this wide-open landscape has a distinct different quality. So why is this all important? By the way, here's the Tuolton River at Roy Rogers Road, where you cross it. Why is this all important? Well, it, it tells you something about the setting of Sherwood, um, but it also, uh, tells us something about the compartmentalization of those walkable, uh, distinct neighborhoods. Because here's, uh, the second component that is really signature for Sherwood and that makes Sherwood really unique, and that's the creek system there. Sherwood was settled on Cedar Creek deliberately, I believe, because access to water, um, for, raising crops and, and drinking. And then as it grew, it, um, butted up towards the east, Rock Creek in those Tonkin Scablands, and, um, also started engaging Chicken Creek towards the west. Cedar Creek is a big part of your community, is where Stella Olson Park is, a lot of, uh, events take place there, and Trail System connects a lot of those neighborhoods right along this beautiful natural resource. Cedar Creek also gives you this real moment as you travel up from Newburgh, it's like a portal in, in the landscape. You really go from one place to the next as you go over the hill and it's tunnel, this green tunnel embraces you, but there's Cedar Creek in the lower left of that picture. A lot of people, I don't think, realize how integral, uh, that creek system is to the quality of life here in Sherwood. Here's Rock Creek in, um, the Scablands, a tiny little creek, but coming off of Parrot Mountain feeding into the, um, Tuolton River, it's, it's a very distinct quality. And then Chicken Creek, this is really a creek we're starting to engage when we start thinking about building out in West Sherwood. This is what it looks like in Sherwood West off of, um, um, Elward Road, um, looking along the power line corridor. But this is what it looks like, uh, and, um, a daily route for many people, um, coming in on Roy Rogers Road, this is, um, right before you get to the housing, we're, we're looking south. And, um, it's going across underneath the, the street here. I think a sign here would, would be nice to, to sort of recognize it, but, um, so here you have it, here's, here's Sherwood nestled into that beautiful landscape, hills, valleys, uh, canyons and creeks. And what this means is that all these walkable neighborhoods, anybody that lives in there or works in there is only a five to ten-minute walk away from a fantastic resource that has a regional reach. And I think that's a really unique quality for your community, and this was resonating, resonated with a lot of folks in, um, in the community, and I think you should, um, build on that, and that's what we propose to do with, with our plan. As you start looking into expanding in the future towards the, the west, um, you start engaging a landscape that is not a flat, um, uh, playing field, it's rolling hills, and it's also cut up, um, by Chicken Creek and a, um, branch off of Cedar Creek that's actually has a name, it's called Goose Creek, and it crosses underneath ninety-nine. So we, um, divided this planning area or this study area up into sub-district based on that landform. So here you have them, um, and I'll talk about our plan next, uh, as it relates to those areas. So these are really places in the landscape, these are your future potential neighborhoods that build on those qualities of being just a short walk away from, from a natural resource that really give you a play, the idea of being in a unique place. So from the, in the north end, we have an area that we labeled northwest, for lack of a better term right now, we just used, um, the, the wind directions. Far west is across Chicken Creek, Chicken Creek. Uh, the west quarter is adjacent to, uh, Elward, and the southwest speaks for itself, just south of Goose Creek. Here's a quick look at your entire town, West Sherwood in the foreground, so we're looking due east towards Mount Hood, if you were up in a hot air balloon. You can see those, those landscape forms that I just talked about, and really embracing the town and setting you apart from, uh, the rest of the metro area. Bull Mountain Tiger to cross to Tuolton, Tuolton, Town of Tuolton across, Rock Creek, drainage area in the Scablands, you can't even hardly, you can't see, uh, Newburgh is across the hills behind us, but Wilsonville is across, um, Parrot Mountain, so. With that long introduction, thank you for allowing me to talk about that, because I think this was really important to the, to the plan. I want to, um, talk about the plan attributes, we've covered this already, I want to dip into the actual, uh, design of the plan. I believe this is loading, but yeah, there is. So in the process, we, uh, with the community and stakeholders and technical advisory committee, we developed early on three concepts, three alternatives, that tested different ideas and different locations for land uses. We're all built on that same foundation of analysis that I just told you about. We solicited input on that, we tested it, we tried different things, and ultimately, it all came together in a preferred plan that you see in front of you here. And, um, this is the overall picture, I'd like to talk you through it now, go north to south, again, uh, based on those sub-areas as created by the landscape. So the north area is, is a good-sized chunk of land that comfortably can hold one of those five to ten-minute, uh, neighborhoods. It's hemmed in by Chicken Creek on the south, Roy Rogers on the, on the east side, and, LeBeau Road, um, and Shoals, Shoals Sherwood Road before it turns, hemmed into the north. There's a power line corridor diagonally cutting through the northeast corner, uh, of the, the land, and we've used that as a delineation between neighborhoods and, uh, sports and recreation location. We tried several different uses in that area. The consensus in general was that a sports and recreation facility here would work really well to serve, uh, both Sherwood and the neighborhoods adjacent to it, uh, but also, you know, competing, uh, regional neighbors that come in to play your teams, uh, have easy access off of your Roy Rogers Road regional street system. The, um, the neighborhood itself is organized around the school, much like, uh, other parts of Sherwood. So the school is in the heart of the, of the neighborhood, the quiet side of the neighborhood, residential, uh, streets would, uh, surround it as well as a park, a neighborhood park, and an extension of, uh, linear park that runs through the neighborhood and hooks up with Chicken Creek and the trail system in Chicken Creek. The green dots you see in any of these maps represent the idea of connected, uh, trail system that could hook into, uh, planned and existing trails already, um, in place. Um, next to the school, the red dot to the east is a small neighborhood-serving mixed-use node. This could be a deli, a coffee shop, um, something very small that allows people to walk to some services and not having to go, uh, into a car and out to the bigger shops for every little errant. Let's see, I think I covered most of the element here, I want to talk about the coloring here a little bit, although we didn't look specifically at densities and we didn't calculate any, uh, sort of carry capacity for different densities. Uh, we do indicate that maybe there would be a little bit more intensity around this school, so that's the darker color, and the lighter color yellow would be a little bit, uh, lighter intensity of, uh, uses. There's actually a hillside towards the, the west, so, um, we put a, another additional neighborhood park west of Elward Road, um, that also could be connected to that trail system. The, uh, west quadrant, um, is the quadrant that, um, handles the intersection of Edie and Elward. This is one of the things we talked extensively about, um, Brad introduced it as one of the options that we have in the plan, I'll talk about this in a second. But, um, west quadrant is directly adjacent to existing neighborhoods, um, uh, east of Elward Road, and it seems to be one of the most easy accessible areas, um, to grow into. And this, um, version of the roadway configuration, we see, um, a realignment of Edie, or Elward and Edie to, um, cross Chicken Creek at its narrowest point, taking out, um, the existing crossing of, um, Elward. The idea here is that we can, uh, save money and hopefully some resources, um, by doing that, and also allow the traffic to flow through and divert it a little bit more and discourage truck, uh, traffic. Well, these are all, uh, ideas that we have, they were going to have to be corroborated li- later on with further study, but the community is very interested in, uh, part of the community is very interested in pursuing this idea. The components here you see that are worth noting are again, the school, a second school location in the heart of, uh, the district, and, uh, south of that, another slightly larger, uh, mixed-use node. Between those two components, there's a neighborhood park and a trail system hooking the two up. Uh, again, you see the densities, uh, or not densities, I should say, the intensities of use, they're reflected in different colors. As you go towards the west here, there's a real distinct steep hill, um, where, um, we have the lightest colors of yellow, um, representing what we call right now, for lack of a better term, hillside residential. These would be the lowest, um, intensities of housing because of topography and existing residences. There's also a park on the ridge, uh, just south of Kruger Road there, there's an existing water reservoir, um, there's capacity, uh, in terms of space to add a second one, which we may need if this, uh, starts urbanizing over time. And we added a park there, um, based on the idea that it is currently really exciting to be on the east side of town and get on top of a hill and look out over, uh, the community, and wouldn't it be great to, um, recreate that on the west side of town as well? You'd be looking west and east and really, uh, enjoy that magnificent setting of Sherwood. Um, so here is actually a little bit blow up or zoom in of that intersection, you see how, um, Edie or Elward, if you come up from the south, instead of going straight across Chicken, now bends slightly to the west, encounters a roundabout that, um, actually hooks up to the extension of Edie, then goes straight across Chicken Creek at its narrowest spot, encounters potentially another roundabout, um, that then, um, to the left takes you to the continuing of Edie Road towards the west, or if you go right, you, um, slowly turn back, uh, towards the north, back onto the original alignment of Elward. Far west then has, um, residential, uh, potential, but also, uh, potential for a nature park in the upper-left corner. There's already, uh, some, um, parks or, or land set aside to preserve nature, it's a really pristine and steep area with a lot of creek branches. And then around that, there's opportunity for a small residential neighborhood and some more hillside residential on the south end of Edie Road. In a pocket, sort of nestled, really surrounded by creeks and branches, is a small pocket that we've also labeled hillside residential. Here is that existing alignment of Edie Road and, and Elward as it exists right now. If this area, um, does develop and become urbanized, um, we're going to have to bring those roads up to urban standards, and the impact of that, it needs to be compared, uh, with the impact of the alternative, to really make a well-informed decision at the time when that comes in. I wanted to point out, one of the things I forgot is this little red dot, there's an additional, uh, mixed-use node proposed here on the bottom right of the im- of the image, uh, again, that's to serve local neighborhoods, and it is on Handley Street and would also serve existing residents, east of Elward. Going further down, and this is the final quadrant or district, southwest quadrant, so we're, we're looking at a little bit of overlap with the west quadrant here, but I'll focus on the, the southern end here, just north of Chapman Road. Again, there's a, uh, rather steep and high hillside, um, that is on the west side of this area, and at the toe of that, or where the, the land breaks into flatter area, this is where we place a, a parallel route to a ninety-nine and Edie, that's a north-south, uh, uh, street, and, uh, that divides sort of the steeper land from the more, uh, flatter, developable portion of the landscape. Uh, there's opportunity for residential neighborhood, uh, a small neighborhood park, and the purple area, uh, represents something that's currently labeled the Gateway District. There's a strong interest in, uh, in the community to capitalize on Sherwood's, um, location, um, adjacent or at the, at the gate of, um, wine country, and, um, maybe this is an area where we have a visitor center, a welcoming center, maybe some lodging, maybe some tasting rooms, but, uh, start taking advantage of that, that economic driver that's coming up and, uh, becoming stronger and stronger as it seems. So with that, um, I think I, um, talked through the entire preferred plan. There's a legend here, um, that explains the components I talked about. And I think with that, I turn it over to Connie.
Hi. So I am going to play engineer and economist, two of my favorite roles here. The phasing and funding strategy is a high-level strategy, given this fifty-thousand-foot view nature of a preliminary concept plan. And it's described in detail in section seven of your planning document. The intent of the preliminary concept plan is to identify the big-ticket infrastructure needs and options for meeting those needs. These options would then be studied in-depth and vetted through a public process during a refinement planning process as areas are brought into the urban growth area. So, um, I'm going to sort of go over them a little bit, but we don't have definite, you know, projected households, the density, all of that, that you would need to be able to say, this is what it's going to cost us to do, um, infrastructure improvements. Rather, we've got some high-level magnitude of order on what those infrastructure needs are and what those costs could be so that we could do some comparison. But really, it's to, to lay out a foundation for, um, refinement plans as areas are brought into the urban growth boundary, and we do actual concept plans or refinement plans for that. First and foremost, um, development in Sherwood West will require significant infrastructure investments to bring rural roads up to urban standards, cross creeks and other natural habitat areas, address topography challenges for stormwater drainage and water and sewer provision. The community identified the desire and need to preserve resource lands and sensitive habitats, as well as to provide parks, trails and recreational opportunities, that I believe Martin did a good job of highlighting a few moments ago. There's also a recognized need to ensure that we adequately plan for future school district needs. So that all goes into those infrastructure needs. As has been discussed earlier, the preliminary concept plan includes two options for addressing the Edie-Elward Road alignment. Ultimately, how this intersection is improved will affect the adjacent lands that are developed in the phasing of the development. Consequently, the plan includes two phasing strategies. The project team evaluated phasing and cost for city-controlled hard infrastructure. That includes things like ru- roads, sewer, water, stormwater, site preparation, traffic elements, and right-of-way acquisition. It's important to note that through the public process, the areas identified on these maps were revised from a one, two, three, four designation to the A, B, C designation that you see in front of you, so that hopefully, we've conveyed that these areas represent groups of infrastructure improvements that need to be completed, um, rather than sequentially how it has to happen. So they're sort of grouped in those areas. The ABC does indicate some sequence, only in the sense that the initial evaluations show that, given the current environment that we have now, regulation, market conditions, community preferences, that it appears that possibly areas A and B could be developed easier, more cost-effective than, say, C, D. What is clear in the plan is that there is a preference and a desire that areas A, B, and C be developed before areas D, E, and F. And that areas E and F be looked at last as the topography in those areas posed the most challenges to delivering services and actually getting things to them. So those are really the only hard and fast ideas that we have there. Do I need to stop? Or do we keep going? In general, Area A has good development potential as it is relatively flat, adjacent to existing city development and contains city-owned land that could be leveraged for right-of-way or development. It also includes an already planned and funded infrastructure improvement at the Elwood-Kruger intersection. We've discussed previously the roundabout that is planned to go there, so it wasn't part of this planning process. It is separate, but we could certainly capitalize on that if we were to develop in this area. Development of the area would rely on a temporary sanitary sewer pump station until a new sewer trunk is extended through the Brookman area, across 99W, and up through Area B. It's important to note that Clean Water Services has expressed concern over pump stations, especially temporary ones. However, they do exist in the region and could be a viable option in this particular application. Alternatively, if that was not viable, as we go on in the refinement planning process and do those more in-depth studies, the planned sewer trunk could be developed in the initial phase through Brookman and across 99 to serve areas A and B concurrently if that were needed. That requirement, we believe, is less costly than starting, say, in Area C, and I'll talk about development of Area C. Development in the north area requires crossing Chicken Creek and significant, let's call that expensive, transportation improvements to the Elwood and Edie Roads, which is why that initial recommendation for A and B, A and B to develop before C. However, several variables could affect the need for land and the order in which it is needed. Area C is the proposed home to two significant features, a school facility and sports and recreation area. Desire for those types of development could cause the city to look at Area C ahead of Area A and B. This is all just really big 50-year look, pie in the sky, very high level. So it's really looking at our best guess of how we could develop and the order in which those could be done. New infrastructure required to develop land in Sherwood West will require a mix of new and existing funding sources. As much as possible, we try to have development pay its way and seek to maximize the revenue from existing sources such as transportation development tax, system development charges, major streets transportation improvement program, and the metropolitan transportation improvement program. Inevitably, however, there's likely to be a gap between the amount of revenue we can generate from these sources and the cost of the public improvements. And we call this a funding gap. So what we've identified in the plan at this point is just new tools that we could potentially look at once we determine what that actual funding gap is, what that amount is. And our consultants have done some initial look at a variety of tools and have highlighted a few to take a look. And I'm not going to go in-depth on them right now because we're not looking to use any of them until we know what our needs are and what that is. But they are in the plan, and we can answer any questions that you might have for that. Now what? Now that we've got this done? What we're here tonight is to have a public hearing, seeking a recommendation on accepting this plan to be used as a tool for the future that we will then take to City Council next month. In terms of long-term development, if I can get this to go, maybe. There we go. Potential development. So like I said, it's a 50-year look. We're at that sort of orange peachy color of the preliminary concept plan. What needs to happen before we can develop this area is that Metro needs to decide to expand the urban growth boundary. Typically, that happens every six years. I think they are going to be doing it in three years to take a look. The most recent one, this last month or so, they've decided that there is not a need to expand the urban growth boundary regionally. So they will, rather than wait six years, look at it again in three years to decide if there's a need. So there's one that need to decide the need, and then... Not working how I wanted it to. Let's try this. Nope. Okay. There we go. Then there's the need for them to identify to expand in Sherwood. So if we go back to this map, and if they decided the urban growth boundary needs to be expanded, it's regionally. It's not deciding Sherwood's urban growth boundary. So one, they have to decide the urban growth boundary regionally needs to be expanded. And then the second, which is another year process typically, is which of all these urban reserve areas is the place that we need to expand into. And so we need them to not only decide, expand it, we need to decide that it needs to come to Sherwood if that's something that we want as a community. We have some input on that, that we can lobby for what we think is appropriate. And I think that's one of the goals on why we did this preliminary concept plan, is to be ahead of that when they do make that decision to say, we've done some study on what we think is appropriate for our community. These are areas that we think is appropriate to come in. These are areas we don't think are appropriate to come in just yet, and that we have an understanding of what it would be to, the cost to serve that. What obligations are we taking on if we do bring area into our urban growth boundary? They do get that specific into how much land it is. Yes. So looking at that phasing, the phasing just talks about the groups of infrastructure that needs to happen. Not necessarily that all of A would come in at one time, or maybe A and B comes in at one time. But it's more looking at those areas and those ties to those infrastructure improvements that need to happen. It could be that part of A comes, or maybe all of A and B, if there's a great need, depending on what year it is that they make that decision to bring land in. So it's very fluid. If they've decided, expand, expand in Sherwood, we would then do a refinement planning process, and it's another public process like we have done with Sherwood West, but we're going to get more detailed. We're just going to look at the specific area that's been brought into the urban growth boundary. And then we're going to do those in-depth, detailed studies on infrastructure needs, the cost for financing, apply some densities and intensities on types of uses, look at zoning that's appropriate in that area at a property level decision. That process typically takes a year and a half to three years to get through from inception to adoption. Once we have that adopted, then we could take a look at annexation. And annexations in Sherwood require going to the voter. So we would have to have property owners that want to come in, to make that petition, to be put on the ballot, and then we have to have that annexation vote. It's typically six or more months, as demonstrated with Brookman. It was brought in in 2002, and we're at 2016, still not past this blue, blue area. Once it is successful, and the voters have said, yes, we want this area to come in, we want to plan for it, and we want it to be part of our community, we're looking at another eight to 12 months typically to get through land use applications and public hearings to actually apply that zoning and utilize that zoning that's on there. Public improvement construction has to happen before we will issue any permits for them to build any homes or businesses. So all those improvements that we want to see, the roads, the utilities extended, all has to happen before they can build anything first. That's usually another six to 12 months, depending on how complicated the improvements are. It could be longer than 12 months if we're looking at Edie-Elwood Road realignment. And then, once they get through that, we're looking at the residential home, retail, commercial construction, which could be anywhere from three months to a year or more. And then we'll see those new residents and businesses move in. The fastest, I think, at this point, we could get through that process if everything were aligned and we had funding available at the minute we could start doing it, would be about 10 years before we would see any new residences or businesses coming in. And I think that's very, very optimistic and fast. It's likely to be a little slower. Processes, we need to identify funding to do the refinement planning, identify funding to build those public improvements that are needed.
So before you begin taking public testimony, our community advisory committee members were asked to come tonight and say a few words. So if they're here, maybe they can start coming up and give you guys one or two minutes, synopsis of perhaps their experiences, things, lessons learned, or things that they don't like about the plan, things they do like about the plan that they can share with you. And then, if you could open it up for public testimony at that point. I do have two pieces of written public testimony that were provided. I'll give those to you right now. One is from a single property owner, and one is from an attorney that represents several property owners in the area. And we spoke to him on the eighth. He came to your meeting on the eighth. It's John Rankin. So he has provided you three things. One of them is a map of the property owners that he represents. One of them is his testimony from January 8th, and then one of them is testimony that he wrote for this evening. As you read and consider both pieces of testimony, I want to reiterate that the concept plan is just that. It is not anything set in stone. That has to happen in a refinement plan. So some of the things that they're talking about, whether or not we push Edie Road through in a single direction, or it goes in a more curved linear fashion out and goes out, crosses the creek in two different locations. Those decisions aren't being made by you tonight. They're not being made by the City Council. They are in there as options on purpose so that the community, at the time these areas come in, can actually have a discussion about those types of improvements and whether or not it makes economic sense, whether or not the community thinks they're a good idea, and whether or not they're willing to compensate the property owners that are affected by that. So with that, I will turn it over to the CAC member.
Let's just start on the right. Tony, you're on the right of the pictures, so why don't you go first?
I'm always right.
You, I saw, oh, that's funny. I saw you in all of those pictures, all of them. You were at every meeting, weren't you?
Yeah, Anthony Bevel, 17036 Southwest Lindley Way. And I've lived here since 1998. And where I live in that part of town, I mean, it's expanded, it's grown. Neighborhoods, community neighborhoods have grown up there that, you know, it's really mind-boggling. It really is. So, you know, I've seen it. As far as this, it was a, it's been a great experience. I think everyone had a good heart in this and wanted to do right and, you know, contributed, had a lot to give. And, well, that, my, but now I get back to my personal reality. You know, we focused a lot on Edie-Elwood and the roundabout. And that's, you know, we're looking maybe 50 years down the road. It's a problem now. The east-west, you know, Edie, Kruger, Chapman, I mean, there are problems right now. And I know it's not within the scope to deal with that. But what I'm saying is that, you know, we can get a foot forward and see what can be done at this early stage to move the Sherwood West forward. And to be honest, real honest, if I had my wish of wishes, I wish we weren't here and that we wouldn't even have to think about adding on to Sherwood because, you know, hey, it's a great town, but hey, it's going to grow. And, you know, I've grown even more than it has since I've been here. So this is a good first step. And I think, again, address the problem of Chapman, Kruger, and Edie with the county and the state right now, get the foot forward. Thank you.
Rick?
We weren't going to mention that, really.
So I can be kind of verbose. I'll try to keep it short. Rick Pennell, 19315 Southwest Edie Road. So I'm smack dab in the middle of the far west area that Martin was describing a little bit earlier. I thought the process was productive. I have to agree with Tony that there was a lot of great discourse. I thought that there was a lot of great stuff that came from everybody. It's really hard for, it was really hard for me to really wrap my head around a lot of it because it is at such a high level, right? We start putting maps together, and we start making estimates and things like that on something that, from the very beginning, was described as what we see when we jump out of an airplane, right? I guess that was the analogy that Brad liked to use. I thought it was a good one. So we start, when we start looking at these maps, it begins to become real when the timeframes that we're looking at are so far out. It shocked me if it didn't change quite a bit between now and whenever it actually gets implemented. People talked about transportation quite a bit. It was obviously on their minds. I mean, Tony just mentioned it. It's on mine. I mean, I go through Edie and Elwood every day, and I go to the Y all the time because all my kids swim, so I'm at Elwood 99 every day. So it's clearly a challenge that I think is only kind of peripherally addressed with this. I mean, we talk about moving the Edie and Elwood intersection a little bit. And I'm not a transportation engineer. I don't know how that's actually going to work out, which is going to be cheaper as far as relieving the alignment. But I think the one thing I took away from the whole experience is that there was a lot of attributes of Sherwood that everyone really liked. The small-town feel, kind of some of the farms around, the access to nature, things like that. In my opinion is that, you know, even though we've got some of these great natural features that kind of surround the city and protect it in some ways, they're not something that, without proper management or without kind of dedication by the people that live here, are kind of unwavering. In other words, you know, let development happen and they'll disappear. I mean, that they'll fill in wetlands or build all the way up to the tops of hills, whatever. And so then you'll end up looking like what Tuolotin and the border with Tigard looks like. And so I think it's going to take dedication by the city and the representatives of the city to protect those things if that's what's really important and what comes out of this plan. So, my two cents.
Thank you.
I'm Ida Wilkes. I'm at 20812 Southwest Elwood Road. So I'm on the northeast corner of Elwood and Edie Roads, which is a very interesting spot. Chicken Creek runs through my lower pasture, so it's wetlands, and they're looking for salmon in it, believe it or not. When we moved here 54 years ago, our kids could ride horses up to six corners. Just Mason's Country Store was there, and they built a hitching post right up. So I've seen a lot of change. It was a wonderful place to raise a family. And if I had my druthers, I would go for option two because my driveway is on Elwood Road. But Martin doesn't agree with me, and I understand what he's saying. On the other hand, I don't know if Martin's looked at the very large, expensive homes that have been built and are being built up Edie Road. That you start going through those neighborhoods. And my other observation is along Elwood Road where there are developments now on the east side, they have sidewalks, they have bike paths. And this will continue to happen as long as people build on that road. And it's important with the schools that we need to build to make it safe for people.
Thank you.
So I have to hold this button? No, one. Perfect. So I'm Diane Matthews, and our property is located at 18550 Southwest Edie Road. We're at the corner of Edie and Elwood Road. Our family's been there, actually, I'm a mandal. So, but I do want to clarify that I'm not the mandal with the piece of property that just got the, the rezoning done. So we have a long history in the family of being here. My grandparents, of course, grew up here, my father, all my aunts and uncles. Ida's children, we all grew up together. I understand all about Just Mason's. Ida's children, we all grew up together. I understand all about Just Mason's Store. What I'd like to say is a couple of things, and just to, in, I like the process that we did. I thought it was a really great process and to be proactive. And there were a lot of learnings out of it, and I think it's good for this whole community to be so visionary. The one thing I would like to point out, though, is that we did, in the process, have two options that we came up with. Not a preferred option, like, was stated earlier. But there's really two options, one to redirect Elworth Road and one to keep it the way it is, and, and take a look at, at those options. I personally would prefer to keep Elworth Road the way it is. I think that roads running straight and in a grid fashion, if you look at the city of Portland, transportation moves pretty effectively through that old-style grid system. Whereas you look at how some of our newer communities, like in Tuallaton and Beaverton and Tigard, that do these cul-de-sacs and, and rerouting roads and making them look kind of scenic and stuff, traffic doesn't flow that well, and we've got a traffic problem out here. And this is a bedroom community, so people are coming and going out of the community. And I think, you know, you need to be cognizant of traffic times getting back and forth to work. So those would be kind of my comments. And, you know, I really am not in, don't like the fact that our property, the integrity of our property would really be impacted if we redirected Elworth Road. Thanks.
You want to?
No, everyone said everything I would say about the road.
So that, that pretty much concludes our presentation to you. And we're available for comments, the team as well as myself. There you go.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it.
The presentation, or do you have people to testify further?
You've testified, so now you need to take public testimony, which includes the written testimony that you received. So you could take the written test, I mean, the folks that have showed up to testify and then...
Okay, so I guess we could do that before we do that. So let's take oral testimony and we will take all the testimony and then take a break. All right. All right. First person to, I have, does anybody want to test, testify as a proponent that is in favor of the application? Then we have one opponent, Kurt Christensen.
Kurt Christensen, 22520 Southwest Fair Oaks Court, Sherwood, Oregon. I live on the east side of Sherwood. But every day for the last 15 years, I have driven down Sunset Boulevard and crossed 99. And it's hard to get across. And coming back in the evening, I can't go any there, any, that way anymore because traffic is backed up three miles. So development has already impacted my transportation system. When I listen to what you've been doing here, I'm afraid that we will lose all the attributes that we like about Sherwood. I'm concerned about the funding gaps. I don't think this will pay for itself by a long shot. I think that water and sewer and school taxes will hit us like a 10-ton truck coming full on. We've just finished five years of voters of Sherwood, for whatever reasons, rejecting Brookman expansions. And I feel overall that we're missing a different look at this whole approach. It's very clear that voters and residents in Sherwood are not in agreement with Washington County officials or metro officials about expansion. And how that's going to play out is above my pay grade. I would suggest that it would be worthwhile, long-term, that you take a look at Corvallis' model, where they have been purchasing green space surrounding the city in order to prevent the kind of growth that this plan is proposing. So those are general comments. I want to introduce a new concept to this kind of deliberation, and it's called a cost-benefit analysis. Before I became a middle school teacher, I spent a quarter of a century as a project manager, and I found it always benefited whenever people, they came up with grandiose plans to have a cost-benefit analysis done. As the planning commission and the city council, they move forward with the process of reviewing and recommending PA 1601 and setting the stage for adding 1,291 acres to the city of Sherwood over the next 50 years. I think it's prudent to look at a few details and assumptions. Number one, current residents have just overwhelmingly voted down the third annexation proposal for Brookman. And the planning department have spent laboriously a lot of funds and time for these annexation proposals. In the last 10 years, the planning commission and the planning department have similarly adopted the southeast Sherwood water master, uh, master plan about adding about 50 acres to the city's boundaries on my side of the city. And to date, the city resident voters and DEQ have yet to reach an affordable and prudent manner to satisfy neighbors and city residents that the area can be cleaned up, contaminated soil removed, and responsible integration of trails, roads, and utility systems built out in a manner that's cost-effective to the city and safe for residents and follow the recommendations from the year-long hearings. In the Sherwood West planning idea, we propose to add 1,209 acres. And to my thinking, that amounts to about another 30,000 residents over the next 50 years. And my mind just boggles when I think about what that will do to all the attributes that we have of the city. I've lived in Sherwood for more than 15 years, just like the gentleman that started out the conversation. And I've watched us grow from about 3,000 or 4,000 to 19,000. I'm not sure that our, our quality of living has improved. I think in general, the city planning department have done a great job representing developers and perhaps not so great a job of representing the rest of us. It would seem prudent to me that you and the city staff take a look at how to do a cost-benefit analysis for these plans. I know that when I get a vote, a proposal for another issue from Washington County or whatever, it says right in the proposal how much additional cost per thousand of assessed valuation this is going to cost me. These kind of plans, they have funding gaps, and they have so many uncertainties that we're looking at the kind of scenarios that we're looking at with the water master plan, where we're in the hole with such big numbers that none of us can comprehend it. So I would suggest respectfully to the planning commission that you refer this plan back to the planning department and to ask council to have an outside firm audit this proposal and put some firm numbers that the rest of us can understand how it will impact my bottom line. When I retire, I would like not to be surprised by another couple of thousand dollars in annual taxes. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one other person that submitted a form and checked other, Bob Schlichting.
He had an emergency, so he's gone.
Oh, that is too bad. If you know him well enough, he still has an opportunity to testify at the city council level. So hopefully he hears that he can come back at that time and let the council... What? I will, we'll announce it, but it's scheduled right now for the, February 2nd, so. We've got his contact information, so maybe staff can just send him an email, make sure that he's aware of when his opportunity, he can submit something in writing or testify on that night. And then I see Kurt also submitted written testimony. All right. If we have no one else to testify, Brad's moving to the table.
So I guess in the words of Benjamin Franklin, you can fail to plan and you'll plan to fail. So I hear what Mr. Christensen is asking for. Oh, this is not testimony, I'm just rebutting. Oh. I don't have to rebut if you don't want me to. No, you don't? Oh, okay. All right. That's fine.
Okay. So we're going to take a five-minute break to read the written testimony that was just presented. I, I guess for clarification, when the CAC members were here before, I think they were representing the applicant and providing their input on the process. And we did keep the record open for any buddy left in the audience that would like to testify as a proponent or opposed to the process as, as their own personal opinion. So if at this time you'd like to testify further, there's still an opportunity. Come on up, Anthony.
Anthony Bevel, Sherwood, Oregon. You know, when I first applied for being elected or appointed for this committee, you know, I, I looked at it, wow, you know, you have a chance to build Utopia. And that's kind of, you know, what it is like. I mean, this is 50, we're looking at something that, you know, is going to take a 50-year process. And this thing is going to be refined so many times. And like it or not, you know, Sherwood's going to grow. I wish it wouldn't. Hey, I'm here and I love it. And everyone probably in this room, you know, hey, like to have it stay the same. But it's going to change and it's going to grow. And an opportunity, a step in the right direction. Hey, this may be totally wrong, but at least, you know, it gets the process going. So that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any final words? Okay, so we're going to close the public hearing and then have deliberation from the commission. I should not. I had, I had spoken with Brad and I probably just did this out of order. As a, as the commission liaison to the citizen advisory committee, I think one of the most telling moments I had was when I saw Martin's face when he was explaining what made Sherwood special. And, I mean, I, I can't take back the look on his face when he hit on the moment that it's the way Sherwood is nestled within the topography that we've grown. And the picture where you come from Newburgh through that tunnel of greenery, I, I know when I'm coming from the beach, I know I'm almost home when I hit that spot. When I come from Hillsborough and I hit past Owl's Garden Center and I hit the green open spots, I know I'm almost home. And every time when I'm almost home, I hit a piece of natural area before I get home. And we are protected and surrounded by that. And I think the other person that testified that we have to protect that part of it and make sure that it's really well-defined in the plan, it is called out in the plan. And between the draft that was brought to the community advisory committee and the draft that we see in front of us, there were some changes made on pages 31 through 34. And I think some of the powerful statements that were in that draft version, and I very carefully wrote it on Post-it notes, "Define the unique identity of Sherwood by walkable neighborhoods nestled in creeks, hillsides, and valleys." And I just, I don't know if it's strong enough in these sections to say, "We have to protect this if we want to continue to protect Sherwood's walkable neighborhoods." And I don't know if, I don't know how you restate that so that future people looking at this plan know that wide creek corridors and buffer zones and making the entrance and the gateway to Sherwood make you feel you're entering someplace other than just going from Tigard to Tuallaton or from wherever Portland ends and becomes Gresham. Because there, there's no distinction, and Sherwood's distinct because of that, because we have this natural space. And maybe I shouldn't have closed the public testimony and kept it open and asked the applicant to go back and revisit those land form analysis dominant and our identity pages to say, I don't know if it's strong enough. I know for space, it fit on the pages nicely, but starting on page 28 to 31, there were some, some key words that were in the draft that was presented to the CAC that I think got dropped. So did I close it too early? Do I make them, do I reopen it so they can redo the language or just send it on to council and say, I hope, I hope they get it right?
You can reopen it and you can make a motion that you forward this to council along with that language that you've identified needing to be in there.
Okay. And I, I just want to make sure I'm not speaking out of turn that, that what people got from both the applicant but from the people that were involved in the plan that nestled in the neighborhood and nestled in nature is the city of Sherwood. And that's, you did a great job, Martin, and it really, if, if people could see it, it's, it's, that's what makes Sherwood, Sherwood, you know. The, the, from a hot air balloon, I fly over it. You can see it. We are unique. We are, we are all by ourselves in this community but part of metro. And so it's, it's important to protect that, I think. So, anyway, that's my opinion. So, and then I noted a couple of Scrivener errors that I'd given to Brad because that's my job. And do you want to explain the transportation thing, or do you think it's, or did you talk to Kirsten about my question about the land use law restrictions in the urban growth boundary?
So, yeah, I think Kirsten would have to answer that if she can come up. I didn't talk to her about it. Yeah.
Okay, sorry. So we're reopening it so I can ask the question. So there's a section in here that says, "Oregon land use restricts the options available to new or expanded travel facilities," which I didn't understand what that meant.
Could you give me the page number, please?
Page 21, and I don't mean for you to answer it on the spot. I just think that it's, it's confusing the way it's written. I don't think it defines what the intent of the statement was. It's under future solutions. "Oregon land use law restricts the options available to include only new or expanded travel facilities within the urban growth boundary." So I'm not sure what it's...
So... I believe we're trying to get to the intent that to focus new transportation options within the urban growth boundaries. And you would need to undertake a goal exception to do a new travel facility outside of the urban growth boundary.
So we could not add a road if it's not within the urban growth boundary?
You'd need to generally, to cross farmland, you would need to do a goal exception to prove why it would be better than any other place within an existing urban growth boundary. And perhaps we could fix the phrasing on that a little bit so it's more clear.
Okay, so, thank you. If you see the lights coming on, now we get what that...
Yeah, thank you. Okay, no, thank you. Sorry that that wasn't well-phrased.
It's also important to note that that is what we would have to bring it into the urban growth boundary for any of these improvements, like for EDL were to develop them out to urban standards.
We can do both things in a correction.
Okay, thank you. I read it and I couldn't understand it.
Thank you for reading.
So we also heard testimony from other people about the transportation concerns. Any other comments, input that the commission wants to send up to the council? Or do you want to... I guess my thought is... And again, this is working 14 months with the consultants that have been absolutely fabulous. They have been amazing. They've listened to very large groups of people coming in with lots of ideas. And I think they've really captured the essence of what we're trying to do. Again, it wasn't 100% consensus on anything. That's why we have two options that are equally viable. And until we get further in the vetting process, we don't know which one's going to work better for the solution. I would trust them to take what concerns we express here and revise them directly to council with the recommendation. If anybody else has any other concerns they want to address in the document before we take it to a vote?
Well, we just read the rank-in letter, which seemed to indicate that there was some concern about the stated lower cost of the single-crossing option A, option one, right?
Moving of earth.
And the cost of keeping it straight and forcing it to bring it up to grade was going to be substantial. And the letter seemed to indicate that there was no evidence in the report to the effect that it was going to be a lesser expense.
Making some assumptions that were too strong.
So I don't know, so I'm asking, how did we decide that that option was going to be less expensive, number one? Number two, unless, as they seem to indicate and suggest, that we do some sort of like truck restriction on Elworth Road, you know, are those roundabouts going to calm the traffic going north, south? Because I've lived on Schroeder Lane before and it's a racetrack right there. I lived next door to the woman who got killed crossing the road to get her mail, not that long ago. So I just have those couple of questions.
So Appendix 8 has the Transportation Options Alternative Analysis Report. And I see a gentleman who may have authored said report in the audience.
What page are we on?
But he was referring to pages 36, 37, where he talks about the analysis.
So if the analysis is what's driving page 37 and 38, then...
The analysis is back and back, okay.
Okay, so let's, you know, how...
I think generally, the comments were also, there's some specifics in here that maybe we need to be less specific about or at least put a caveat that this is just the current thinking and not be quite so, this is what we want.
So on page 37, the last paragraph says, "Analysis of the estimated construction costs indicate this is the most expensive."
Right.
So...
And I read that in the plan and then I read the letter, and so I wanted to contrast that.
Based on... So referencing Appendix 8 in the center of the document would help someone know where we came up with... Where this traffic engineer came up with that statement.
Says, "Please see Appendix 8."
Where is that? Oh, here it is.
On page 37, and then...
And then there's... Appendix 8 is not numbered, but it's like...
Which might be a problem right there.
Four sheets of paper from the back.
Oh, I see Bob's letter right here.
That one you need to... Put an eight, number eight on it. You're right, it isn't.
Okay, if you could make... Just tell it to us in English.
I'll say it in English. I did do a cost estimate. It's a rough cost estimate. I'm looking for factors of magnitude difference. Not just hundreds of thousands, but millions, tens of millions of dollars in difference. And I tried to base it on what we currently did with our TSP update and the implementation plan, which was taking all our construction projects and basically applying construction estimates to it.
What we already know, what we've already experienced.
What we've already experienced. So basically, I took those values, the same sort of... If you want to look at our implementation plan, which is on, it's part of the five-year CIP, it's the same form. So I used the same process and said, okay, if we were to look at these two projects individually and considering that it's a high, 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 high level of review, what sort of magnitude of difference are they going to be relative to the other projects? They are very expensive. When you're dealing with realigning the road either vertically or horizontally, yes, it's going to be expensive no matter what. There are some assumptions that go along with this that sort of played into it, which was, what's the environmental impact of doing this? What do we know now about what we have to do for impacting environmental zones? How much mitigation is offset? That's land cost that we have to purchase to expand the wetland and upgrade it to bring it into that mitigation factor, take care of that mitigation factor. What's it going to be in the future? My dealings with the county and Clean Water Services, they're going to increase that. EPA is looking at greater requirements for mitigation zones. What does that look like? Nothing is set, but there is enough in there to say, okay, great. I'll throw something in there that basically says in 50 years, you're going to have a larger mitigation requirement for the impacts to environmental. They're so important that any type of small damage or small impact, they want you to really increase it. So I threw that in there. And it's rough. What we're looking at eventually was, I don't know if that was in the phasing plan that was put together in the report, but at one point in time, we had received a cost estimate for each one of the phases that was a range, and that was what we were working with. And Brad, is that in there? Or did we pull that out? It's in the maps with the phasing plans?
Well, it says, "Area C, option two is 80 to 95 million, and in option one, it's 65 to 80 million."
Right.
That's inclusive of...
That's inclusive of everything.
Water, sewer, park roads.
A whole nine yards. Engineering costs, design costs, construction costs, contingency is in there.
Pages 41 and 42.
So, you know, again, when you're talking about 100,000-foot level looksy at this, your range of numbers that you're looking at is, what's the magnitude of the cost overall? Is that an expensive number, $70 million project? I'd say it's very significant. Is 70 to 80 the difference between the two projects? Is that significant? I'd say that's relatively, it's very significant in the way of making a decision factor of, if we go this route based on these assumptions, is the magnitude such that it would lend you to go this way versus that way? That's the best we can do. I could drive it down and say, okay, I'm going to run a profile on this thing and start running all the exact calculations of earth moving. To what end? I think it's better to say, based on a scale of magnitude, one project is more expensive than the other, based on the assumptions that we placed on it.
And maybe if we keep that information, I mean, I agree with what you're saying. I think maybe the objection also was calling it the preferred plan. You know, rather than going into this and saying, "We have option one and I'm option two." We're looking at this for 50 years now. Maybe, in fact, cost is not the only thing to consider to make that the preferred plan, based on just what some other people are, input from other people.
I think you're right. When we're talking about option one or option two, when it comes down to it in the future, both of those options are going to be looked at from a design standpoint, because who knows what the impacts are going to be? Who knows what development is going to occur that's going to create constraints in there? How is that going to work out? I think it is a great idea to keep both options open and viable so that you don't settle yourself with saying, well, this is the alignment. We want to go out here and twist it here, and we just don't want to look at this. I think having both options in there is very smart. I think that the rational mind also says that we also want to know, relatively speaking, what was the thought process at the time that this was put together that gave us this option, having this type of cost estimate, and this type of process, having this type of cost estimate? These, my notes will be in the files, so somebody can go back in and look at them.
Or call you.
You can't put your phone number and...
In the ground? I don't think so. But really, I think it's a viable...
Contact information for you for the next 50 years. Always, wherever you go.
Wherever I go. But again, the range of numbers is just sort of to give a person a feeling of the impacts, relatively speaking. I think they're both valid. At the time, when it really comes down to it, there is going to be an analysis done in a much finer detail that will refine all that stuff with current costs at that time.
Right, and the political will of whether or not someone wants to change a road.
Correct.
Because we can't define what's going to happen in 20 years.
No. I think you can define when, stepping one step further, I think you can define when those improvements will be absolutely required to occur based on development of Area C. When Area C develops, those crossing or alignment, whatever, improvements will come into effect. They don't need to come into effect until Area C has the pressure to develop.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can just stay here.
Only if I get your phone number for the record. Being packing up and moving now.
That was one of the concerns people had was the cost, right?
And...
Or the clarifying what makes it better than the other.
Right.
And making sure that there are two options and neither one of them are preferred. That's what...
I think so too. I think...
I mean, I think the question is...
It's referred to in here as being preferred, though.
Did you want to have these estimates in an appendixy?
It's already in the appendixy.
These costs? Not these costs, not my breakdown.
Those are his.
These are my breaks. You've got the overall cost, but do you want to have the cost estimates, the ones that I've done as part of the technical appendixy that says, here's how we developed it, with the assumptions that were placed into it?
Why not?
Just make sure you're free on the second.
Yeah, maybe include that, and then maybe look at this and as a thing back to the council saying, or have them remove the word preferred.
I think the question's going to come up again, is how do you develop this range of costs?
So your technical document that has that is two or three pages that would be added to the Appendix 8. You just add a couple more pages.
Yeah, I think I've got like five or six pages of calculations of numbers and stuff like that. It's not a range. The range is, these are hard numbers. They're just, boom, this is the number. The range comes about with saying, well, what are you going to have? You're going to have 5% below, 10% above. You got a 15%, you know, swivel in there somewhere. That gives you a range.
Some documentation that you didn't just come up with it out of the pie of scotch.
Right.
You didn't just make up numbers.
And just say, hey, it's not... I'm sure that'd be more...
I try not to. I really try not to.
It's just the documentation to make sure that it's not just your good guess.
No. In fact, I think our design group, our planning group actually took this to another engineer who looked it over and basically said, yeah, that they look relatively within a range that would be descriptive of the project.
Okay, that's great.
Don't you think including that would make some sense?
Yeah.
Include that in the...
Appropriate to add that to the Appendix 8.
That is what I assumed was going to be the answer to the question. So I just wanted to get it out there in verbal land. Always makes me feel better when you talk.
All right.
Another issue I have is not with you, with Bob, but...
Brad, while you can.
I mean, I realize we're at the point where, you know, Metro identified, we applied for, we moved forward on the project, but what if we don't do anything? I mean, I guess if we...
So just to clarify, Metro, the only thing they identified is urban reserves.
Right.
We don't have to do anything. This is not, you're not adopting anything. You're accepting a plan that will help inform. If you choose not to accept it, we just won't be informed when we're having conversations with Metro in the future. Brad, do you want to chime in? You've talked more about the actual grant.
Yeah, I guess two things. I mean, we've already done the work.
Right.
So what's the harm in accepting the information? So you're not making any decisions on anybody's land out here. There's, we've left it through this process, we've left it as broad as possible. We didn't assign any zoning to these properties. We talked about options based on cost estimates that are very high-level cost estimates. They were developed with the community over 14 months. It's not, it doesn't, I mean, I guess the downfall is we spent $221,000 of Metro's money and some of our own to get this process done. Well, that money belongs to you too. You know, Metro didn't just...
And like my question to Bob, I was just trying to get this aired because Kurt made, and I don't think Mr. Christensen is still here, that he made a statement about, you know, being here for 15 years and Sherwood has grown. And if we add all this land, it's not going to be Sherwood any longer. And yet, so I was just, I was trying to get out into the record that...
We're not doing anything, really.
We at least need to plan in case it happens. And if the voters continue to say no, it's not going to happen. But at least we have a plan in place.
If I can sort of step back, this process has been amazing. I'm thrilled to see so many CAC members in the audience. The whole public involvement has been absolutely amazing. But it's different than anything Sherwood's ever done. And frankly, it's really different than anything the region has done because it's that, truly that pre-concept plan. And we started this process with, we don't want Metro to bring something into the urban growth boundary and tell us what it's going to be. We want to identify what our community wants. And that's exactly what this process has done. And that will help us at the staff level and at the political level, when Metro is considering urban growth boundary expansions, it will help us say, hey, this is, we've gone through this wonderful process, lots of involvement, lots of buy-in, and this is what our community has said. So we'll be able to push back a little bit more or pull in a little bit more. So you can choose to do nothing, or council can choose to do nothing, but it sort of negates what we've done to date.
Well, that's not my choice. I was just saying...
I know, but that's the, I mean, I think that this process has been very informative.
Because I have, and I think we have heard, you know, citizens come to our meetings and say, "Why are you allowing more people to build houses? Why are you allowing more..." Well, it's the eighth most popular city in the country. It's no longer hidden under a bush, you know, we're not, we can't hide it. It's, we're nestled amongst greenery. We can't help it. It's a wonderful place to live. We can't help that. But, so I just want the citizens to know that we're not in a big rush to do this. We're not in a big rush to add 1,300 acres to the city. But if we don't plan, then someone else is going to plan it for us.
And that's true, because if we don't plan and we don't have a place for people to grow, people are still going to want to come to Sherwood. And instead of having people have an opportunity for a place to build, they're going to redevelop in spots. So instead of having a lot of single-family residents, the infill projects, the granny flats, what are they called, accessory dwelling units, people are going to take down three houses to build eight townhouses. And so Sherwood's a place that people want to move to. And if we don't plan for a place, if you lived here when we moved, you know, because a lot of us moved here in the, you know, mid to late 70s, we all wanted to just stay a small town. And people who moved here a year ago moved here because it's a small town, but we did it with a lot of good planning in place, maybe not always perfect. But we grew so much, but we're still a small town that looks good. And if we can plan for it correctly, we can continue to be a good place to live. The other place, I want to make sure we, the buy-in... The other place, I want to make sure we, the buy-in also was like the schools, one, Brookman, the way you said it was really good. Metro dictated that Brookman was going to come in looking a certain way. Elwarden Eady was the community reaching out to Metro saying, we need a school in another area, and that one is working well. We got school buy-off on two schools and community areas around new schools. So, this feels like it could come in managed growth instead of forced development.
Yeah, I think they did, I think they did a great job. Yeah.
Yeah, so, and then the preferred alternative answer on page thirty-two, I think, I think language could just be changed minorly that would address the concern that that's not a, there are two options. So, the title says preferred alternative. If it said preferred alternatives in the title, and the resulting preferred alternatives are...
One and two.
Options one and two with the variance is only the, um, transportation. The plan's basically the same with two different, I, I understand that it's a preferred alternative plan, but there's two transportation aspects to it. And so, if that could be... Yeah.
Just be clarified then.
If that paragraph could be...
Because I thought you were choosing option one, not option two. See, that's what, when you say preferred, that's how, so maybe, you know, twenty years from now...
In the presentation that's given to council and in the language of this document, it, the preferred alternative has two transportation options right in the beginning, so that...
Clarifying that before we go to council with the language would be awesome.
Okay. And then I don't get in trouble later for changing anything. Dramatic.
Start the timer, Brad.
All right, four minutes.
I'm one of the newer residents of this town. I came here three years ago, this March. I know this town went from three thousand to nineteen thousand. Why did it keep and how did it keep its small-town feel? We did it, or you did it, by having identifiable neighborhoods. I go around town and I see signs saying High Point, Crestwood Hills, Renaissance. When I ran for council last year, I made a point, talked to as many people as I could, and I asked what problems or what things they'd like me to look at for them. And one lady I talked to, what, you know what her complaint was? Her neighborhood didn't have a sign identifying her neighborhood. This is what makes Sherwood Sherwood, it's a town of neighborhoods. And we can continue to grow and still be a town of neighborhoods. We're a small town of twenty thousand people. We're going to be a small town of fifty thousand people as long as we're a town of neighborhoods. And that's what this is. You've identified five or six neighborhoods. Okay? I'm also reminded of the Chinese proverb, that a journey of a thousand miles begins with a first step. This is a, this is a first step. A first step to something that's fifty years down the road, and I ain't going to be here to see the end of it. But it's a first step.
You can take her number.
I hope, okay. It's a first step. It's nothing, you're not committing to anything. You're committing to think about it. You're committing to look at it. You're committing to continue to do what Sherwood does better than any other place I've ever lived in my entire life, involving the citizens of this town in how this town grows and develops. And a town that doesn't grow and develop dies. And you can either grow up, down, or sideways, or you cannot. None of us want to see this town die. All of us want to see this crown town continue to grow and prosper and be not the eighth best place in the nation to live, but the best place in the nation to live. And this is how we do things like this here. Okay? It's not, it, it's not even etched in silly putty, folks. It's, it's just a start. But if we don't start, we're never going to go anywhere. And we're not going to progress, and we're not going to do better, and we're not going to continue to be the best place the world lives. So, there's things about it I don't like, there's things about I know, I think about it, these people sat here and worked together for god knows how many months, don't like. But, they compromised. They talked about it, they think about it, and they're continuing to think about it and refine it and change. Nothing stays the same. Situation on the ground changes, this will change. Don't get lost in the detail at this point. We're nowhere near detail. This is just an overall concept. We're thinking about it. Hey, Metro, we're thinking about it. We're planning for it. Remember my seven Ps? This is one of those. I think I compliment you. I, I'm in awe of you people. To give of your time, to give of your expertise, to give of your energy, to come up with this, you should be all proud of yourselves, and we don't recognize you properly. You, you wonderful people, I, I appreciate you. And I thank you. And I think we should send this on to city council.
All right, Russell, that's your cue.
I don't know if I have the right, uh, language or not, does it make a difference?
It makes practically no difference.
Okay, all right.
Kind of legislative.
I recommend that, uh, PA sixteen dash zero one Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan be forwarded to the city council with a recommendation of approval.
As dated or with the changes we talked about?
With the changes Lisa talked about.
No, we all talked about it.
We all talked about those.
We talked about adding the addendum.
Yes, we did.
And...
And the language that Jean has on her sticky notes.
Yeah.
And the language, yeah, and the language on the sticky notes about...
And the preferred alternatives.
It, preferred, preferred alternative with transportation options.
Options.
All right, anything else, is that it?
And then your notes about, uh, levability or intent.
Okay. All of that.
And I second it?
We're good. All right, it's been moved and seconded that we recommend approval of PA sixteen dash zero one Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan to council. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Thank you very much. And then we're going to have a very, very brief feedback from the commissioners that were at the work session, but if people want to run away before we do that. Thank you very much. So, there were five of us at the industrial work session, industrial use work session that went fabulously well, fabulously well.
Really did.
It did.
Um, Lisa's got her notes ready.
Well, Kristen, you said you wanted these notes?
I recommended that we, um, make a copy, just so that in case she didn't get everything that you guys said, um, verbatim.
Okay.
If, if, were we going to go over our notes for some reason?
Well, I, I guess Julia wanted to draft language to bring to us at either the second...
Twenty-sixth.
The second meeting of January, the first meeting of February, but I felt that the commission should have an opportunity to provide input, input for that draft session. And the question that was asked at the table that I was at was, are you planning on wordsmithing the existing language or setting that aside and doing something new? And I just wanted to hear what, um, any, if anybody had any thoughts about that.
Did you, what were you planning to do, Julia?
Um, well, I, my response to Jean's table was sort of a hybrid of that, um, which is, use the existing code language as a general base, wordsmithing it to be a little bit more general. So, not throwing it out and, and doing Hillsborough's code with very, like, five to eight very, very general categories, but, um, kind of breaking our code up a little bit more so that it, it could become a little bit more general, maybe taking out the specificity in certain areas. That was my initial thought process, but I, I do absolutely welcome your feedback. And, and it sounded to me from the work, you know, the feedback that you got is that you're, I get the sense that you guys are leaning a little bit more to, to more general, even more general than I was originally thinking. I, in my own, and I think that's, that would make planning's life much easier. My word of caution would be, um, at the work session, you heard from property owners in, of industrially zoned property, brokers representing industrial, um, you know, people. Um, so, keeping in mind, I also handed out at the work session, but I'll make sure that we email it out as well, because it was, I handed, we handed it out right before. Um, we've gotten additional feedback, um, from the online survey, which is more targeted to, to residents. We've, um, put that out on Facebook and the Twitter feed. Um, so, we've gotten some more feedback from residents. I don't think it's drastically different in terms of, um, the types of uses people don't want to see, so it may not change things too much. But, but it might inform you differently than perhaps just listening to the, the industrial property owners. And so, that's the thing that you guys will ultimately have to balance is, yes, you want to make the property owners' lives easier, but we also need to make sure that we're, um, protecting the community values and, and needs and things like that, and that's...
What I heard more from the community was what they don't want.
Mm-hmm.
And it seems that it would be easy to get rid of the whole chart of permitted and conditioned and make those general, and then a grid of what we don't want. Because if you, the, um, prohibited uses in a grid by G I L I, E I would enable us to address what the citizens' concerns are. The E I area is only remote with no residents next to it, so what's prohibited in L I might not necessarily be prohibited in E I, but in general, manufacturing, warehousing, distribution should be allowed in all industrial areas. And we didn't see a lot of differences between the three industrial areas as, as what they should be doing.
So, my, I have a similar take on that. I think, um, I know throwing everything out is maybe not the preferred method, but I, uh, I really felt that, um, you know, I was looking at that one...
The chart.
That chart and that one entire section of toys and electronics and food. I mean, there was like, everything was in there, and I thought, well, what's left? You know, I mean, and, and the thing that, um, Mr. Biles, is that his name? That he brought up was, not you, of course, was, um, you know, the EPA and the, and, and ODOD and every DMV, they, or DMV.
DEQ.
DMV, DEQ, enough acronyms, I'll get it right. You know, they have laws in place, you know, so if anybody's going in, so if, if we just say, we don't want anything that produces a toxin, well, almost everything produces some kind of a byproduct or waste, and all of it is usually handled, and that's the kind of stuff that, that I think that we can weigh in on. But what I would like, I would, I would love to see if we brought, you know, state-of-the-art research, research and development technology to Sherwood, or we brought some, you know, space, not space age, but you know what I mean? Some kind of unique thing that we can do because we weren't limiting, you know, maybe we don't want to be drone manufacturers, but drones are toys, I think, so under our current code, we couldn't have any of those. So, I just thought that maybe we should take a fresh look at it. And I know you mentioned maybe not like Hillsborough's four or five categories, and I'm thinking, we don't want to be quite like Hillsborough, we want to do it the Sherwood way. And Tuolleton seems to maybe a little bit the other way. They talked about how working with Tuolleton, they can get through the process, but sometimes it's kind of painful, because everything is like a decision and a, and a, and assertion. You know, I was talking to the lawyer, law, Kelly, Kelly, next to me. But they get through it, because it's such a great spot, and it's great land, and it's a great opportunity, so they get through it. But they, uh, my table seemed to indicate that people come to Sherwood, they look at the land, they look at the code, and they're like, oh, that's like two years down the road before I could even get into my building. So, that's too long, I'm going to move next door, I'm going to move someplace else. Not that we want to open the floodgates, but I just felt like, I really felt like, dang, our code maybe is a little antiquated. Maybe we should take a fresh look at it. Maybe we should be a little more general, and then really define only those really drastic things that we really don't want, and still be able to maintain the look and the feel.
And, and hopefully, what we could have brought to us, information about the Oregon State Program that is called the Shovel Ready Program.
Shovel Ready.
That enables industrial properties to develop. And what my table said, and wasn't someone from the E I, it was someone from general, um, I think they're light industrial, um, was that because we have so many things that are conditional uses, it's a red flag, and they are not eligible to go through this Oregon shovel-ready program, or if they are, it's just so cumbersome, they don't want to go. Again, it goes along with, why come to Sherwood, it's so complicated, everything's a conditional use, and I can't get through any of these incentives, and...
And I can, at the next meeting, I'll, I'll make, try to make sure that Tom is here as well, um, because I want to make sure that we're also keeping in mind that jobs piece, that, um, especially for the Tonkin Employment Area, um, and if, if ultimately we make the decision to allow some warehousing and distribution or limited or something like that, that's fine, but I just want to remember that...
Right, the jobs.
That's initially why we, we limited that there.
But warehousing, but warehousing in Sherwood is not going to be warehousing like a Fred Meyer Distribution Center in Clackamas.
Right.
Because we don't have access. So, any warehousing is going to be on a smaller scale. I work in a warehouse environment, and we have a lot of employees, because it's small scale. And if we understand that, we should not exclude warehousing from the industrial area.
And that ultimately is fine, that's, that, um, is contrary to what was factored in when, when we didn't allow it, and specifically said, we don't want that in the Tonkin Employment Area.
Right, right.
It's a different time.
Mm-hmm.
Can we go, can we ask you to come back with what you, what your intent is next time, so we, and then the next time we can push it forward to council? I mean, you said it was the next two times, the next meeting or the two meetings from now?
Yeah, we've got quite a ways before you go to council. Um, January twenty-sixth, I may have something to talk about, and, and I, my hope is that I can do that, and then maybe we also have a February ninth meeting, or February twelfth, I've lost track of time, February ninth. Um, and that's really just for you guys to say, yeah, we're comfortable enough for you to do the whole D L C D notice and that. And then we'll have additional, um, meetings to actually have a hearing and discuss and, and make additional changes. Um, I also wanted to mention the shovel-ready, um, program. I'm, I'm sort of familiar with that concept, just because of the work I did on the, um, Tonkin Employment Area Implementation Plan. And basically what that is, it doesn't allow development to occur, but it is a sign for developers. So, if, if someone's looking at coming into the region, they're going to say, hey, state of Oregon, I'd like to know where all the shovel-ready sites are that are this size. And so, they've gone through this process where they already know what sort, you know, land uses and infrastructure and costs, and there's some things that are really known, and they know we're shovel-ready. So, yeah, absolutely, I think having the conditional use and the uncertainty is a factor that, that comes into play, but it's not like all of our sites are going to be shovel-ready, that, that, but...
Right, but when they, when everything's conditional and they're looking at twenty to forty thousand dollars to do anything, that's...
Absolutely, and that's why we're bringing this to, to the commission and the council.
There was, there was one other thing that was discussed, um, briefly at our table, that I thought was interesting and significant potentially, was the definition of commerce to, within a, an industrial area in terms of, um, food service, uh, restocking or something like that, because the, the, I've forgotten the name of the lawyer.
Kelly.
Kelly, um, brought that up in terms of, you know, at noon, where does everybody go to eat?
They leave the area.
They leave the area. And if we specifically exclude the potential of having that, we create traffic problems at noon and one o'clock. And would we want to, and I think we probably would, include kind of a statement that we would permit that in relationship to...
Yeah, actually, the Tonkin Employment Area specifically does allow along what will ultimately be that east-west connector, I think about a five-acre commercial area, and define exactly where to serve that for that exact purpose.
Yeah, and... Yeah, and.
Limited in size, so that people just can't be there, but.
So.
We don't wanna, like, you know, just have to codify it that we make sure that we don't lose it.
Right.
Okay. Um, so speaking of commerce and retail, certainly in, in some of the responses that you heard back from property owners especially, um, they, they wanted to open up the retail. Um, while we are limited by Title IV, um, in terms of how, you know, not, not just opening that up, um, too much, I wanted to get feedback from the commission on, on how receptive you are to that, if you want to entertain that concept a little bit more, or if you wanna go, no, we really wanna preserve industrial for industrial and, and not.
The latter.
Well, um, there are many instances where factories produce seconds.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Uh, and have a retail aspect connected to the factory.
And we allow that at a small, small percentage.
Just like the restaurants.
Right, a small percentage on, in an industrial area.
Yeah. We wanna allow that too.
Yeah.
And otherwise, we want, don't wanna have McDonald's in there.
Secondary, yeah, not primary.
Yeah, I think that's fine, but I think what you're talking about is if a landowner, you know, gets hit up by a retail developer of some sort, I, I think I would not, I would not be in favor of that, really.
That's not what we want.
We have plenty of retail.
No, this isn't gonna be another mall.
Yeah.
Right. But people that, if you looked at the survey results, there are some people who wanted that. Some people who wanted more commercial.
And, and I.
Is not what this is for.
I interpreted that to mean, maybe they didn't really understand the question or the zone.
Exactly.
That may be a miss, um, a misassumption, but that was kinda what I got from that.
I think we have such limited land, you know, that we wanna do it right. And, uh, I mean, as, as things move west, potentially, there'll be other pockets of commercial and retail that will develop, so.
Okay, so that helped get you where we're headed?
I think so. You'll let me know when you see the draft language.
Okay, fair enough. All right. Any commission announcements? No plays till?
Nice, nice job. I don't know how you got all those people to come, but, I mean, I mean, they all have a stake in the land. I get that. But the knowledge flowing out, I mean, it's kind of one-sided, but it was still very eye-opening for me.
It was a great turnout. I was very excited. Um, part of it was direct mailing to all of the property owners, and they do obviously have a vested interest in, in the outcome, and then, um, you know, and at least a handful of those people came to us in the first place, and so they obviously have a very vested interest in the outcome because they're the ones that brought the issues to us in the first place. But it was a really good meeting.
It was good.
And heard feedback from people.
And this was good too. Oh, my gosh. And Tony's a superstar. He's always at everything.
He's in every picture, right?
Every figure. That's right. Nice job.
Um, and speaking of good turnout, I just wanna commend you guys again because I, the feedback from brokers that have been around the region and done a lot of these kinds of things. Um, I know that the public work session isn't, isn't new so much anymore, but feedback that I got from several of them was, wow, this was really great. This is better than, you know, anything I've experienced anywhere else. So, you know, kudos to you guys for being open to that and, and being excited about doing that and facilitating those conversations.
All right. Are there new business?
Nope.